Good evening and welcome to the August twenty first, two thousand twenty five Regular Board of Education Meeting. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Mr. Loop?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
Mr. Nickram?
Here. We'll start with Pledge Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we do at the start of every school board meeting, we read the vision and mission statement. And mission statement reads, achieving distinction in all that we do. Well, the mission statement reads, cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. We'll work on item number two this evening, the strategic plan update.
Yes, we'll wait just a moment for Mr. Scullon to bring the presentation up. As is customary, we are happy to share with the board and our larger community some acknowledgement of just a few of the areas of distinction as part of our strategic plan goal, but as part of our daily operation throughout the school district. There we go. And of course, our vision, as you just read, and our mission, key parts of what we do day in and day out. I don't have a click. Thank you. And related to our strategic plan are three goals that we've been working through over the last four years, heading into our fifth year. That of community distinction, a district that will be preferred educational option in our area. And we think that this evening's presentation on distinction will help make that case even a little bit more clear. When we speak of being a district of distinction, we are committing to being a comprehensive district, one that provides a wide range of learning opportunities, community-building initiatives, clubs, activities, diverse programs, and more, each delivered with purpose and quality. That is what defines our district. Tonight, I am proud to highlight just a few of the many recent distinctions from across our district. Of course, this recognition is by no means inclusive, capturing everything, that would be simply impossible. We would bring the strategic plan distinction update to the board a couple of times throughout the year that we're heading into just next week to share with our community and emphasize the hard work does pay dividends. During this evening's presentation, I'll touch on several celebrations. Those being recognized will receive certificates after school begins on September second. Additionally, the names and images shared tonight have already been or will be shared on our social media platforms. So, beginning this evening, athletic programs and athletes have long been a source of Black Hawk pride in Fort Atkinson, and it's a valued tradition for the board to recognize our state qualifying teams and individuals. This evening, we are proud to celebrate the members of our track and field team pictured here who have earned the opportunity to compete in the WIAA State Track Meet. The entire team had an exceptional season, showing tremendous growth, not just physically, but also mentally and emotionally throughout their journey. We have sent a heartfelt congratulations to our track athletes and coaches on their outstanding accomplishments. We are also proud to recognize our two outstanding student athletes who qualified for the WIAA State Wrestling Tournament. Both athletes demonstrated incredible dedication, resilience, and sportsmanship. Haley delivered an exceptional performance at state, earning second place. Congratulations to our state qualifiers and their coaches. The Fort Atkinson archery team includes students from the elementary, middle, as well as high school levels. On March twenty eighth, they competed at the State Archery Tournament in Wisconsin Dells, where all three of our teams qualified for the National Archery Competition that was held on May eighth in Louisville, Kentucky. Purdy Elementary had an outstanding performance at the NASP Wisconsin State Archery Tournament, capturing third place in both the Bullseye and Three-D Divisions. The team's strong performance at Nationals paved the way for a remarkable opportunity to attend the Championship Worlds Tournament, an extraordinary achievement. Among the standout athletes was fifth grader Tenley Stewart, who had an exceptional season, finishing second in the Three-D category at the state tournament. She continued her impressive run at the Championships and Worlds Tournament in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, where she placed fourth in Three-D and ninth in Bullseye, proudly representing Fort Atkinson. At Nationals, our middle school archery team delivered a strong performance, earning qualification for the Championships World Tournament, also in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. One of our middle school students stood out for their exceptional accomplishments. Seventh grader Lindsay Van Treeck was awarded the Wisconsin State Archery Champion, taking first place in Bullseye and third place in Three-D. Her exceptional skill and focus helped lead the team and brought a great, brought great pride, rather, to our district. Congratulations to our entire team for their remarkable achievements. In talking about archery, the high school archery team delivered a strong performance at Nationals, earning a well-deserved qualification also to compete in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, at the Worlds Tournament. Their hard work, focus, and teamwork throughout the season truly paid off. Congratulations to all of the archers and their coaches on their remarkable accomplishments. The Southern Lakes Anthology provides talented writers, poets, artists, and cartoonists in grades three through eight an opportunity to publish their original work. Students submitted entries in various categories, including prose, poetry, illustrated writing, expository writing, art, and cartoons. We are thrilled to announce that eleven of our students had their work published. Some of our multilingual students participated in a statewide contest celebrating multilingual writers and artists. Any multilingual student, grades K through twelve, or even in adult education in Wisconsin, is eligible to enter an essay, poem, or artwork into the contest that is hosted annually by the organization. That organization is the Wisconsin Teachers of English to Speakers of Others Language. Only the top three students at each level in each category have their work selected for an award and cash prize. The winning students also have their writing and artwork published in a booklet that is promoted and distributed across the state of Wisconsin. We are excited to share that we had seven students from Luther Elementary earning special recognition and awards at this statewide event. Fort Atkinson Middle School's Math League had an impressive showing this season as well, helping the school helping the school earn top placements in the Wisconsin Math League. Sixth place was earned statewide by our sixth grade team and seventh grade, ninth place. Congratulations to these talented students for their problem-solving skills, as well as their dedication. The AP Scholar Awards honor high school students who have demonstrated outstanding achievement on their Advanced Placement, or AP, exams. These awards are prestigious academic distinctions that students can include on college applications and resumes, and in some cases, count as college credit. This year, we are proud to recognize twenty-six students who earned a score of three or higher on three or more AP exams, twenty-three students with an average score of at least three point two-five on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. And then we had nineteen students who achieved an average score of at least three point five on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. Boy, try to keep track of that. Let's just assume that was amazing work. That's incredible. Badger Boys State is a program designed to educate young leaders on becoming more impactful community members in Wisconsin. High school students between their junior and senior years participate by creating their own city, county, and state-level governments, gaining valuable insights into our governmental system. The program is known for inspiring participants with lifelong lessons and relationships. We are proud to have one of our students as a delegate representing the Fort Atkinson High School, that is Eugene Jardine. The American Legion Auxiliary Badger Girls State is a week-long government and leadership conference for young women in their junior year of high school. This program aims to prepare high school girls in Wisconsin for citizenship in a modern world, where the government touches their lives in many different ways. Also, to teach the principles of democracy in a representative government, provide an opportunity for living together as self-governing citizens, sharing experiences, demonstrating duties, privileges, and responsibilities of a good citizen, and to instill a love of country and desire to preserve the fundamental features of our form of government as founded by our ancestors. We are proud to announce that we had two students that were selected as delegates this year, that of Savannah Hendrickson and Laura Northee. Through the Start College Now program, Fort Atkinson High School students achieved significant milestones, one successfully passing the Nurse Assistant Licensing Program, Kurt Lewis, and two passed their EMT Licensing Program, Cassandra Chase and Caitlin Farrell. For the thirteenth consecutive year, the school district of Fort Atkinson has proudly earned the Best Music, Best Communities for Music Education designation from the NAMM Foundation for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Now, in its twenty-sixth year, this prestigious recognition honors districts and demonstrates exceptional dedication to providing music education and access for all students. And clearly, we are on a winning streak, and we hope to make that year fourteen in the year to come. And of course, there is more to come, as things continue to ramp up for a brand-new school year that is approaching in just a week or two. Things like FFA, Fall Athletics, Show Choir, Jazz Band, Marching Band, Fall Musical, National Honor Society, FBLA, and much, much more will take feet and start running very, very shortly. So again, congratulations to all of our One Fort Achievers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's always reminded as we go through this, when we do it throughout the school year of, you know, there's so much that goes around, just math and English, but there's so much outside of everything that we do here. So it's really great to go back and highlight some of these accomplishments, certainly, and, you know, every, you know, from the teachers helping out in certain clubs to the students participating, it was fantastic, so.
And the connectedness it can have to future careers with the nursing stuff? Sorry about that. That just, I mean, it's, there's just such a broad and diverse set of things to be able to do in the district. I think it's great in all those activities that kids can participate in, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Moving on to comments from audience, it does not appear that we've had anybody sign up. All right, so we're moving on to the consent agenda this evening.
Yes. As we know, Robert's Rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning all of these items have been provided to the board members in advance to assure for an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening, the board will consider items A, minutes from the July seventeen, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting. Item B, personnel. We ask that the board approve the following appointment, effective at the beginning of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year and contingent upon release from current contracts, and upon completion of satisfactory results of a pre-placement health screening and background check. That is Courtney Chek, one point oh FTE art teacher, limited-term contract at Rockwell and Purdy Elementary School. Item C, foreign travel to Costa Rica, summer two thousand twenty-seven. Items D, gifts to the district. This evening, we have a donation from Shirley Koots in the form of a two thousand twenty-three Grand Marquis LS with an approximate value of four thousand six hundred and thirty dollars to the high school automotive class. Also, a donation from Charles and Angela Mitchell, that in the form of a two thousand five Ford F-150 with an approximate value of five hundred dollars, also to the high school automotive class. Also, a donation from the Hord Historical Museum for one thousand six hundred and one dollars and seventy-six cents to Fort Atkinson Middle School for the sixth-grade Native American Social Studies Unit. And finally, a donation from the Liberty Through Literacy Foundation in the amount of seven hundred dollars for books for the Reading Rock Stars Summer School Class. Then you have item E, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report.
Thank you for that. Would anyone like to pull up any particular item from the consent agenda this evening?
I move approval of the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Loop, a second by Ms. Sully, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mr. Lou?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, moving right along to non-instruction October board meeting date.
Yes, so as is customary, your October regular meeting is the third Thursday, which does not allow for us to get your final financial information to finalize the tax levy. Therefore, we move the meeting a few days so that we have all of the information from the state that is required in order for you to make appropriate decisions. So we are asking that we move that meeting in October, your regular meeting, that is, to Tuesday, October twenty-first, beginning at five thirty.
Thank you.
Be it resolved that the October board meeting be conducted on Tuesday, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, starting at five thirty PM.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Mr. Loop, and all those in favor, say aye.
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 All righty. And that passes. Next up is proposed sponsorship agreements for the high school.
Yes, we are very, very excited this evening to bring action for consideration in front of the full board. Mr. Loop and Mrs. Reynolds, rather, met with a few of the other committee members as part of the sponsorship board committee. We are very, very pleased to announce and hopefully have you consider approving a ten-year agreement with Jones Dairy Farm to renew the Fort Atkinson Football Stadium, now formerly known, and now potentially known again, as Jones Dairy Farm Stadium. They are offering one hundred and ten thousand dollars for a ten-year agreement. The agreement is like everything in the board packet for others, if they would like to review that as well. The terms of that agreement are virtually the same as they have been in the past. However, those monies are being paid upfront so that we are able to do some more substantial updates and improvements to that facility sooner rather than later. So we are very, very impressed and not surprised, I suppose, by the continued generosity and support of Jones Dairy Farm. We would be recognizing them more publicly and more thoroughly after working through their marketing department and doing something this fall, pending your approval this evening. Mr. Loop, I'm not sure if you have other comments there.
No, no, I appreciate the work that you and Philip Jones have done, and I appreciate Jones Dairy Farm continuing support for the stadium.
Yeah, and as, you know, as, you know, this was presented, you know, just looking through, like, Jones Dairy Farm has been a consistent supporter of the school district for many, many years, and certainly was for ten years prior, eleven years prior at the, at the stadium. And I couldn't be happier to have them back and have them supporting, again, the school district for Atkinson, something that they've done for many, many years. So I certainly appreciate that sponsorship. I'm proud to have them a part of our community. They certainly make this community better, so.
Yeah, I think the partnership within our community is great between the businesses. I mean, they get inundated with requests, but the support that they give is fantastic. And I think these sponsorships really show that collaboration and that support back to the district, so. And I do think that those sponsorships, ten years seems like a long time. And so getting that money upfront really allows us to be able to use that in an impactful way so that we can keep maintaining facilities and keep using that to make our place look an area of distinction.
Absolutely. Jones continues to be a donor in many, many different ways. Of course, they've donated for the Pro Start Kitchen at the high school and many other facility projects along the way, and also just in donations in support of other programs and activities throughout the district. So they clearly are a premier benefactor to the district, so we appreciate their support. So there's a resolution there for your consideration.
All right, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the sponsorship agreement with Jones Dairy Farm for the high school football stadium?
Second. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Mr. Loop, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Lou?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right.
Yes, and then we're also very excited to bring to the board a new sponsorship opportunity. That and the naming rights of the Performing Arts Center, also located at Fort Atkinson High School. Fort Community Credit Union, or FCCU, has generously offered the district seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, all of those funds upfront for us to consider some update projects in that facility. That would now be known as FCCUPAC, or FCCU Performing Arts Center, if you're have a little trouble with consonants. But we're very excited, as are they, to partner with the district. They continue to be a big supporter of the district in many, many different programs and activities, as well as supporter of specific things that are going on throughout the district. We see FCCU present quite often. So they were excited, excited to sort of pioneer this sponsorship opportunity. So this also would be for ten years. The, the dollar amount is in keeping with what the sponsorship guide suggested as an initial investment. So we'd ask that you consider that donation as well. Pending approval, again, we will do something much more formally and something much more publicly to acknowledge their initial sponsorship agreement, and we'll be excited to get going and working with them.
It, I mean, I think it should be noted that, like, at the football stadium, you get all sorts, you get track, you get football, you get band, you get, you know, different schools coming in. At the Performing Arts Center, I mean, I know these are centralized around the high school, but at the Performing Arts Center, I mean, that's kind of a central place for us, where all the elementary kids are coming, and they're doing their holiday shows, and the middle school is doing their band and their orchestra performances. So, I mean, it might seem it's very high school-centric, but I really think that it is sponsorship for the district. And so I think that that's really important, and I can't say enough about the support and the agreement to give the money upfront that really allows for some capital improvement projects.
I think, yeah, there's some, I'm sure that the PAC manager has some ideas for improving, like you were saying, the lighting or the sound system. There are many things that, that will benefit with this new partnership. And I feel that FCCU is going to be a really dynamic partner. I think that they're excellent, excellent communities, so.
You know, and to your point, these, these may be located at the high school, but they are certainly community locations. It's, it's hard to find a time when the Performing Arts Center, or the stadium, or our fields, or other facilities aren't being used, not just by district activities, but by community activities as well. So definitely thousands of people come through that PAC on an annual basis. And Mr. Loop, you just made me think of something as well. And to be clear, we do intend to continue using sponsorship money for significant upgrades or significant projects in these facilities. This isn't money that's used for basic maintenance or for custodial and, you know, things that the district should be doing in order to maintain and protect our facilities as is. So it's definitely money for the next step in these facilities, and it's great to be able to earmark those funds for that type of capital work.
Yeah, and, you know, as, when FCC is presented, you know, what struck me is the partnership, right? Like FCC has been, been very strong, just like Jones Dairy Farm has, but it's, they see the value in the PAC, right? They see what happens there. And there's been, you know, even with my time on the board, there's been, you know, the amount of traffic that's gone through the PAC has increased tremendously, you know, we're talking to elementary school, Christmas cuts or things like that, but there's, there's much more, you know, many more other events that happen throughout there. So, yeah, I can't be happier with Fort Community Credit Union, you know, reaching out and, you know, realizing that there's, you know, there's some value to their business as well. So, yeah, it's, it's great. I think, you know, it's been some time since we've had some sponsorship money come in, so it's really great to see these two kind of come in at once, and, yeah, I'm really pleased where this is at right now.
And we can move on from the auditorium.
Right, now it's a game of Wordle.
We have a motion in front of us here.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the sponsorship agreement with Fort Community Credit Union for the high school Performing Arts Center?
Now, second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Loop, a second by Ms. Sully, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Loop?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, next up is Board Policy Update thirty-four point two.
Yes, this evening, this would be the first read for this collection of policies updates. Again, these are available to the public in the board packet. The board has reviewed them as well. The first read happens in this portion of your agenda. Pending no questions, it will go into your consent agenda next year, or next month, rather, for final ratification. But again, for your review, which I know all of you have done, there's nothing of substantive change in this particular update. It's more legal references, some language changes or updates to policy language in general. But there isn't a significant policy change to point out that has dramatic impact on our operations. So we do ask that you do your first reading again of thirty-four point two this evening.
Thank you for that. Yeah, these, you know, it's, yeah, these, these come around and they're placed on the table for one month when the consent agenda here, so, all right.
And this is through a third party that offers us these reviews. This isn't just us going through saying, let's change a word here or there.
Thankfully, no. That, and that is the way things were, was years and years ago. No, we work with Niola, a service that, that many, many, many school districts use, which is a consortium. That certainly does not mean that we simply accept everything they send, but they definitely do a great job of matching updated statutes or keeping current with, with language or consistency between policy. And they then keep us in the routine of rotating policies for review over time in an ongoing basis. So I would contend that through their partnership, our policies are far more updated and much more current and reflect current operation rather than perhaps policies in twenty years ago, so.
All right, so be it resolved that the Board Policy Sections contained in the Board Policy Update thirty-four point two be placed on the table and considered at the September board meeting?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Mr. Loop, and all those in favor this evening, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and it does not look like Kurt is here.
Aye, I'm here.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Just couldn't get it to unmute fast enough.
No, you're good, you're good. Wasn't sure. All right, just want to make sure you got your vote in there. Appreciate that. All right, next up, an opening of school update.
Yes, it's hard to believe that we dismissed kids on June eleventh, not that long ago. And then we walked into summer school just a week or so later, and then we just walked out of some of our summer school programming last week. And we are ramping up today. We welcomed new staff to the district. On Monday, all of our staff return with a building day, then building professional development. On Tuesday, on Wednesday, we have the district launch that we call Convocation. And then on Thursday, we have a day of professional learning with our staff as well next week. After all of that ramp-up takes place, all very important stuff, we welcome kids back into the building, beginning on Tuesday, September second. And just as a reminder, by state statute, we are unable to start prior to Labor Day. So once in a while, we still get questions as to, like, I remember we used to start in August, and why don't you do that? And it's because we can't. So we will welcome students back, beginning Tuesday, September second. Of course, all of our families have had communication from each of their respective schools regarding all of the details of that onboarding. But on Tuesday, the elementary schools will welcome one half of their kindergarten students, as well as all of their first through fifth graders. The middle school will welcome sixth graders only for a day of orientation, and the high school, ninth graders only, also for a day of orientation. Then on Wednesday, September third, the other half of those kindergarteners, the first half gets to rest up, and I think they usually need it after that. But the second half come on Wednesday, the third, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are all in session. all in session on Wednesday as our 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders at the high school. We did make a modification to the school day, which has been very public, as we updated the calendar, and we added some minutes to the school day. I know one of you had asked, parents are very aware, it's on the websites, it's in the handbooks and everything, but elementaries will have a start time of 7:50, and the final bell will be at 3:10, which is the same for the middle school, 7:50 to 3:10, and then the high school is 7:45 to 3:15. I guess I will also, I see that it is here for me, the elementary on Thursday, August 28th, from 5 until 6 PM is the kindergarten back-to-school night. That's a nice opportunity for kindergarten families to get into those schools. And then all of the students back-to-school night at the elementary level will be Tuesday, September 9th, from 5 until 6 PM. Meanwhile, at the middle school, on Tuesday, the 27th, from 4 until 6 PM, the middle school hosts a 6th grade and new student orientation up at the middle school. And then on Monday, September 8th, they have a open house for all of their 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students and their families from 5:30 until 6:30 PM. And then at the high school, on Tuesday, the 26th, from 5 until 6:30 PM, is a back-to-school night over on the other side of town. So, lots going on to get everybody up, running, and ready to be in school, ready to learn.
It's here.
It's here.
Wasn't sure if you were aware.
Thanks for reminding me.
It does feel like that summer went, you know, that it went fast, and I'm getting ready to enter the last year of a student in this district, so looking at the half of the kindergarteners, man, I remember back in those days. That didn't seem that long ago.
Right, exactly.
That's a fantastic.
I always like the kindergarteners coming in because they're so excited to come to school. Backpacks are bigger than they are.
That's fantastic to have the kids back in the buildings. It really, it seems empty even, you know, in the evening when you come for a board meeting. It's energy, I think, during the school year. And if I can speak for my missing meeting tablemate, Amy Reynolds, it's super exciting.
Appreciate that.
Well done.
All right, next up for items for future board meetings.
Yes, speaking of Ms. Reynolds, who's very excited about summer school programming in general, we will have a 2025 Summer School Program Report and a number of other reports coming your way in September, October, and November.
All right. Last up is the adjournment, and then as a reminder, we have our annual meeting at 7 o'clock tonight, so.
Great, move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, a motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Mr. Loop, and all those in favor this evening, say aye.
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 Thank you. All righty, 6:02 this evening. We'll see y'all back.